Call this evening's City Commission meeting to order. Welcome to your City Commission meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 26, 2020. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Due to the restriction of social distancing to mitigate the spread of COVID-19, the City Commission meeting will not be open to the public. In accordance with Kansas Open Meetings Act, the meeting can be viewed live on Channel 2 and via Facebook Live. Questions on agenda items will be read during the discussion on that topic. Submit your question to C. Williamson at firstcity.org no later than 6:00 PM on May 26. And Ms. Williamson, are there any questions or comments that were submitted?
No.
Okay, thank you. Members of the public wishing to receive agenda notifications can contact the City Clerk to be added to the Agenda email distribution list. Agendas are available for viewing on the city website, www.levinworthks.org. And we'll start today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance followed by silent meditation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we're under the category of Old Business and the first agenda item or the agenda item under Old Business, no, two, the first agenda item is consideration of previous meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on our minutes from our last regular meeting, which was May 12, 2020? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve the minutes from May 12, 2020, regular meeting.
Commissioner Preisinger, second.
There's a motion and a second to approve our minutes from our May 12, 2020, regular meeting. We're going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I vote aye as the mayor. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries. Our meetings, our minutes are approved from our May 12, 2020, regular meeting. Next agenda item is second, consideration ordinance. Consideration of Ordinance 8127, amending Chapter 44.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, I'll turn this over to our Police Chief Pat Kitchens.
Okay. Hello, Chief.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, this is Police Chief Pat Kitchens. Very briefly, this is a result of some changes out at the Eagles Field, where they added the batting cages. At the request of the Parks Department, we made some changes, making traffic flow one way from Choctaw to Shawnee Street and then restricting parking on the west side. During the discussion, at first consideration, the Commission gave staff direction to also remove the signs that limit parking in and near the 21st and Choctaw intersection that go up by the baseball field. And so we got to work the next morning on that. And as it happens, we already made that change about five years ago. We simply, staff simply made a mistake. We did not take the signs down. That was on August 23rd of 2016 at the Commission meeting. So the signs are down. We took those down immediately. It's, there's no need to make any changes to the ordinance. We already did that. And so the rest, we're ready to proceed with unless there are questions.
Chief Kitchens, this is Mayor Griswold. I just, just thinking about the signs, do we, they don't need to be moved over to the west side of the road, do they? I mean, the signs, no parking? I mean, I know that they were on the right side or the east side. You've taken them down, got it. Is there any, any need to put any no parking signs over on the, on the west side of the, of 21st Street?
Yes, sir. We'll need to put signage up there. We are changing the ordinance, the, this, the first part of it is to change the ordinance to prohibit parking on the west side of 21st Street from Choctaw to, yeah, from Choctaw to Shawnee Street. Yes, sir.
But you think at some point there will be signs that will be put over there on the west side to say no parking?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The process would be to wait until it's approved. If so, if you approved it tonight, we would then proceed with installing the signs.
Okay.
And I assure you that we will do that this time.
Okay, no problem. Are there any other questions or comments from my fellow commissioners on this particular agenda item? I'll entertain a motion then. It's, well, it's a roll call vote, isn't it? It's a roll call vote. We will begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard. Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero in favor. So we have approved ordinance number 8127. Is that correct, Ms. Williamson?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to go to the next agenda item. Hold on a minute here. I think we're under New Business now. Yeah, New Business. And there weren't, there wasn't any public comment for New Business either. General Items, Recommendations for Revisions to Personnel Policy Manual.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, Paul Kramer, City Manager here. I'll handle this item. We also have our Human Resources Director, Lana Lander, on the call. Lana did some of the research on this item. Periodically, there are changes to the City of Leavenworth Personnel Manual are recommended. Ultimately, those are approved by the City Commission. There's two items before you tonight. Both of them have to do with the city's holiday calendar. We don't annually approve the holiday calendar as it's in the approved document, the Personnel Policy Manual, that the Commission individually approves as we make changes. The item, first item before you tonight is the addition of the Day After Thanksgiving as a recognized city holiday. This has been something that we've been talking about for a number of years. Nearly all of the other local municipalities in the area have that as a holiday. We've been monitoring traffic on that day for the last couple of years and have little to no traffic on that day. Before we made the change, I asked our HR Director to not only ask around to see what other municipalities have this as a recognized holiday, but overall, see where we stack up as far as the number of holidays. I certainly didn't want to do anything that put us far ahead of any other municipalities. Of the nine surrounding municipalities that the HR Director contacted and responded before writing this policy report.
Excuse me.
Commissioner?
Can, can you speak up, please, Paul? I'm having a real hard time hearing. You're the only one I can't hear. Thank you.
Okay. Is this better? Can you hear me now? Okay, I'm sorry about that. So just briefly recapping, the issue before us is the addition of the Day After Thanksgiving as a recognized city holiday. We did survey some area municipalities, nine of which responded. All nine have recognized the Day After Thanksgiving as a city holiday. And of the ones that we recognized, seven of them had 11 city holidays or municipal holidays. Two of them had 12. The City of Leavenworth was at nine with a city manager's holiday, so we didn't believe that this change put us in any different position than the other municipalities. So the item one would be to recognize the Friday after Thanksgiving as a holiday, as does Leavenworth County, so it put us in the same position as them. And the second one is just an administrative change within the personnel policy that would take the city manager holiday, which has been in existence for long since I've been here, 10 years. It's a, it's a roaming personal day. We had restricted it to three different days of use. With going with the Friday after Thanksgiving as a holiday, that would further restrict it. So we just want to change that to a roving holiday to be able to use at an employee's discretion during the year, which is also common to most municipalities, counties, or city governments. So those are the two changes that we wanted to make to the City Personnel Policy Manual. I'm here with any questions, as is our HR Director, and it's before you tonight.
Questions or comments from commissioners? I have a question, Mr. Kramer. Go ahead.
I think it makes a lot of sense, having the Day After Thanksgiving. I know a lot of companies do that as well. I like the idea of the city manager's holiday, too. That's good.
So, Mr. Kramer, do we, so, and I agree with what Commissioner Bowder just said. But do we go from nine to 10 or nine to 11 holidays?
We go from nine to 10 plus the city manager's holiday. So 10 recognized holidays plus the city managers.
Okay. Just wanted to get a clarification on that. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Kramer? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Preisinger, I move that we approve the changes, the revisions to the Personnel Policy Manual as presented.
Commissioner Bowder, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I, as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries, so we've approved the proposed revisions to the Section 11 that will take effect immediately. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Mayor's Appointments. That's from me. I move to reappoint to the Grow Leavenworth County Development Corporation with terms ending May 31, 2022, the following individuals. Ms. Amy Baker, Mr. Thomas Meyer, Mr. Michael Prevost, Ms. Wendy Scheit, Ms. Lisa Weekly. Is there a second? Is there a second on the?
Commissioner Leonhard, a second.
Okay. So there's a motion and a second to reappoint the Grow Leavenworth County Development Corporation with terms ending May 31, 2020, the five individuals I just mentioned.
Discussion, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, yes, absolutely. Yes.
Quick question. I'm sorry, I didn't notice this before and ask the City Manager. Is it one of the members you're recommending living out of state now?
I don't know the answer to that.
I know Mr. Prevost, if you're talking about Mr. Prev-
Does Mr. Meyer still live in the area? I thought he had moved to Indiana. Thomas Meyer, Tom Meyer. Commissioner Bowder, do you know?
Our Assistant City Manager indicates that he did, he believes he does live here. He had moved back to Leavenworth.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, and I should have, I should have opened it up for discussion. That was my bad. Any other questions or comments?
This is David Waters, City Attorney. I just want to make a couple of things. It looks like there are several people on this that are unmuted, and I'm getting a lot of feedback. I see a caller four, Mike, Lana, Jeff. I just know there's a lot of people who are unmuted, and it's causing a lot of feedback for here, and I worry about that for the city and other people listening in. I do want to remind people as well, since there's a lot of crosstalk, and to make sure people do take that opportunity to introduce themselves before they speak, because there seems to be a lot of crosstalk among people, and I think it's unclear for members who might be listening in, who would be speaking. I think that'd be appropriate for the, under the new Open Meetings Act regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters. I, now, I know I made the motion. Did I have a second? I don't recall whether there was a second. Can somebody second this particular motion? There was a second? Okay, all right.
Commissioner Leonhard, a second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to, on this particular agenda item. We're going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I, as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. Motion carries, so we were reappointed to the Grow Leavenworth County Development Corporation, those five individuals, and their terms will end on May 31, 2022. Next agenda item is correction to Library Board Member Terms. Mr. Kramer or Ms. Williamson?
Our City Clerk will handle this item. Carla?
This is just to correct the terms for the Library Board Members for Melissa Davis and Carol Perry. Both of those were appointed to the Library Board, Ms. Davis on April 28 and Ms. Perry at the May 12 meeting. Both of those, I incorrectly stated their terms would end April 30, 2023. That should have been April 30, 2024. So this is just for the Commission to make a motion to extend their terms or correct their ending terms to April 30, 2024.
Is there any discussion on this particular agenda item? Any comments or questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Bowder, I move to correct the Library Board terms of Melissa Davis and Carol Perry to terms in the April 30, 2024.
Commissioner Preisinger, second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I, as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero. The motion carries, so we've corrected the Library Board terms of Ms. Melissa Davis and Ms. Carol Perry to terms ending April 30, 2024. Thank you. Next agenda item is budget and CIP meeting dates.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the City Commission meets annually to consider the city manager's proposed operating budget and capital improvements program. In 2019, the City Commission held these meetings in a single day from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and years past, the meetings have been done over multiple afternoons. Setting the date is necessary to finalize the budget schedule and inform the public. Based on our success last year, starting in the morning for the first time and working throughout the day, I would offer the same week, which would result in Friday, July 10th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the 2020, 2021 Operating and Capital Improvements Program City Commission Meetings. If there's any discussion on that item, you don't need to formally approve the date, just a consensus that that works, and then we'll build our budget calendar and our notifications around that date, and those are open to the public for City Commission budget hearings.
So we're just, we're just trying to get a consensus at this point. Any questions or comments or discussion about this particular agenda item? I think we showed last year that we could get it done in a day, and so I'm comfortable with what's been proposed. And if there are no further questions or comments, we'll, we'll go, we'll go and be deliberate about the consensus, even though it's not a, not a motion to approve, but we'll go around the horn anyway. And I will start with Commissioner Wilson. Do you, do you consent to this particular day for our budget hearings?
Yes, sir. July 10th works for me.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Leonhard? Okay. Commissioner Preisinger? This is, this is a good day for you, Mr. Preisinger, the July 10th, from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can now. Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
Okay, and, and I think it's a good, good date, and so the consensus of the Commission is that we'll have this particular session on July 10th from 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM for the 2021 Operating Budget and CIP consideration.
Yes.
Okay. Next is waiver of permit fees for USD 453.
I'll let our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald, handle this item.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, this is a request from the School District for the City Commission to waive fees for two of their large projects that they are doing this summer. They are at Richard Warren Educational Campus. They're doing the substantial internal remodeling valued at a total of $2.8 million, and work at Leavenworth High School, much of which is outside the building of $2.5 million. Traditionally, the City Commission has reviewed these requests favorably, and staff has communicated with the School District to ensure that the value of the fee waivers is correct and that we try to not charge for value of projects for things that we don't inspect, such as at the school where they're repaving the parking lot. That is not a fee that we would normally collect a building permit on. As a consequence, the $2.8 million at Warren is about $1.96 million worth of value for the building permit process, and at Leavenworth High School is $430,000. The calculations for these permits combined is $15,574. Halberd has attached some correspondence, as well as the request from the School District in the policy report. There's also a summary of permit fees that have been waived for the last several years, and I'll do my best to answer questions that you might have.
This is Mayor Griswold. I think it's pretty straightforward. The categories in which, you know, we've have, we have in the past as far as categories for waiving the fees, of course, education, nonprofit organizations, and I think those are the two major ones. Are there, is there another category, Mr. McDonald?
Generally, local government, which is, is the county would be the other large one.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I see that. All right. Any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald? If hearing no further discussion, I will entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Go ahead, Commissioner Leonhard.
Commissioner Leonhard, I move to approve waiving building permit fees associated with the Richard Warren Educational Campus and the Leavenworth High School renovation projects.
Sir, a second?
Commissioner Preisinger, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Preisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard. Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
And I, as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is five to zero, so the motion carries, so we've approved the waiving of those building permit fees associated with USD 453. Thank you. Next is 2020 Pavement Management Program.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, Paul Kramer, City Manager here. I'm going to turn this over in a minute to our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald, to get into some of the specifics, but first I'll make a few comments. Among the highest priorities of the City Commission identified last year during goal setting was our roads need work. They need help. We need more resources allocated to them. So what you're seeing tonight is the result of those actions by the City Commission to prioritize through the budget session and through our goals, road work within the City of Leavenworth. Tonight, we will look at a program for the largest annual road project in the city's history, a $2 million, almost solely mill and overlay project that hits northwest, north, east-west and north-south streets throughout the community to make a large, sizable dent into the backlog of road issues that we have in the City of Leavenworth. About six years ago, the city had dedicated about $750,000 to roads. That increased to $1.35 million. And then last year, with no revenue increases, no new taxes, the City of Leavenworth dedicated another $650,000 from our countywide sales tax and our local sales tax through the CIP into our road project. So tonight before you is our proposed year one, and you'll also see outlined our proposed year two, although we will not vote on that until next year, just to give an idea. We have, we do have years three, four, and five drafted out, just so we have a comprehensive plan on how to best attack our roads over the coming years with this increased funding. So tonight, I'll let the Public Works Director go through it, but out of that $2 million, about $185,000 will go to city parking lot repairs. $1.65 million will go into mill and overlay projects throughout the city. $40,000 is going into, and I believe what we have here is a striping program for the city, a road, road striping project, and then, of course, next year's design. So this is a good day for the city. I'll let the Public Works Director go through the project and tell you a little bit about how we arrived at the streets that we arrived at for year one, and a little bit about year two, and then we'll open it up for questions or comments from the Commission. Mike, do you want to take it away?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, we're excited to bring this large program to the Commission for review. If this is the approved direction that we are planning to move forward on, we would expect to open bids in, toward the end of June and start work at late July. It's about a 90-day project. The streets have been surveyed by an outside firm known as DanTech. They use electronic methods to identify pavement distress and to quantify it. We used them in 2016 and again in 2019, and with city staff and our consultant, the fitness engineers, we identified what we believe is an appropriate approach to deal with the citywide pavement issues. Our goal is, over time, to bring our pavement condition index from a range of probably in the 50s now. We would like to see, work our way toward an overall index of 65 to 75 or better, which is a fair to satisfactory number in, in this environment. The staff focused on the Commission's direction, which was to fix some streets that get used by people throughout the community, and we did that. We also evaluated the two parking lots that we reviewed with the Commission, and this year's design is for both parking lots, although we're currently budgeted, are scheduled to only work on the one parking lot, the northwest corner of Third and Delaware. The city manager outlined the, outside the, the general program, there is a large component in here for new striping on, most likely, the collector and arterial streets. Even if we don't do any work on them, some of the, the striping needs attention. It's difficult to see oftentimes. We looked at, as you know, the last two or three years, we did a lot of granite seal. We wanted to transition into more permanent, long-lasting improvements, and you'll see a return this year and probably next of a mill and overlay program, basically, where we will remove the created asphalt on the surface of the street and replace it with new. There will be some repair work that goes along with this, and we prepared the maps that you see in the, in the agenda to guide the way. We also realized that this year is potentially a bonus in that the price of asphalt on many recent projects throughout the Kansas City area has been down significantly over previous years, so we sought to identify several, what we call alternate projects, which were primarily paving-only type projects. So if we get to the end of the project and we realize that, gosh, we have funds remaining, that we didn't do something, or the bids came in under our estimate, then we can add several substantial projects to the, to our contractor's workload, already having the price available. The staff work, it took about two or three cycles of working with the consultant, review by our staff, going over our thoughts, and getting another revision. As a consequence, we are a little behind where we would like to be with the plans, but we did get a very late start on this. We are excited that the plans are actually fairly well along, and we look forward to bringing this program to a satisfactory conclusion over the course of the summer.
Any discussion on this particular agenda item? Questions or comments for Mr. McDonald or Mr. Kramer?
I have something.
Ms. Bow, yes, go ahead, Commissioner Bowder.
As far as, for the general public, I think as far as the funding for this was based on what we approved last year, correct?
Yes.
For 2020. And so, and so if things change in regards to- And so, and so if things change in regards to sales tax and that, that could influence our second year and third year, correct? Or has it's already been set up?
Theoretically.
If I understand correctly.
Mike, I'll handle that. Theoretically, yes, although the majority of the funds come from general obligation bonds, which are property tax paid for, and property taxes are pretty stable. The 650,000 delta that's picked up by sales tax, we would do everything we can to preserve that, whether that's foregoing other projects in the CIP to ensure. That is the direction staff has from the commission. That's going to be up to the commission when we get into budget meetings here in the next couple of months. If that's your top priority, then I see no reason why we can't continue that same amount going forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments or points of discussion?
This is Commissioner Priesinger. I just want to commend Public Works for what they've done, and also a little pat on the back for all of us commissioners that have now raised the amount that we've been putting in streets to $2 million, which is a huge increase over what we had over, over what was over the last five or six years. And this increase from last year to this year, 1.3 to 2 million is actually larger because 500,000 of that 1.3 million last year was the, the last part of 20th Street. So basically, we're seeing a little bit more than a million dollars, million dollar increase over our normal milling or overlay, uh, street repair program, if you take out the 20th Street. So citizens are going to see a huge difference in the roads, in streets in town, once this is completed in, in the early fall. So it's well worth it, it's a good expenditure of the money, and I'm, I'm glad that it's, it's being done, it's been sorely needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Priesinger. Commissioner Leonhard, do you, do you have anything, any comments?
Commissioner Leonhard, yeah, I agree with Commissioner Priesinger. Yeah, this has been needed for a long time, and I'm just really excited, and I'm sure the public is, to see the results of this.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilson, anything?
Yes, sir, just excited to, to see the increase go from 1.3 million to 2 million, and looking forward to seeing the work being done. And, Mr. Mike McDonald?
Yes, sir.
And so, and we're currently filling potholes during this season as well, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, sir.
My, I echo the comments of my fellow commissioners, and the only other thing I can say is that I can tell there's been a lot of detailed planning. I especially like the alternative, the alternative recommendations with respect to pavement improvement, if in fact, funds, additional funds do become available because of the decrease in cost to asphalt or other unforeseen situations where we might be able to get more bang for our buck. But I think that aspect of the, the planning is something that has been pointed out, but I think is, is very good and gives us flexibility if in fact, the circumstances and the conditions are right to do even, do even more streets. Any other comments or questions? If not, I will entertain a motion, and I believe we're going on for a motion for this, aren't we?
Yes.
Yes, yes. So I will entertain a motion on this particular agenda item, the 2020 pavement management program.
Commissioner Bowder, move to approve the proposed 2020 pavement management program.
Commissioner Priesinger, second.
Motion and a second to approve the proposed 2020 pavement management program. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Wilson. Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Priesinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye vote, aye is the mayor. The ayes have it, the vote is five to zero. Motion carries, so we've approved the proposed 2020 pavement management program. Thank you, Mr. McDonald and your staff. Just pass along our appreciations for the hard work, and thank you, Mr. Kramer. Next is Resolution B 2250, set hearing for unsafe and dangerous structures.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, the city commission reviewed a list, list of 25 structures at the April 14 city commission meeting and voted at that time to proceed with placing 23 of the structures as presented on a list for a public hearing. After that time, one property, the property owner at 1152 Randolph, applied for a permit to demolish the detached garage on their own and is actively in the demolition process, so that property has been removed from the list put forth for the public hearing. City staff has completed the necessary paperwork to set a resolution for the public hearing. All property owners have been notified that their properties have been identified as unsafe and dangerous, and given the opportunity to contact staff to discuss options for resolution. The, all the properties are before you in the policy report, the same ones that you saw at the meeting in April. And the resolution tonight, it fixes the time and date and place of July 14, 2020, in the city commission chambers, 100 North Fifth Street, Leavenworth, Kansas, for a public hearing on those items. It's not appropriate tonight to discuss any of the properties on the list, simply pass the resolution should the commission choose to do so, to publish the date for the public hearing at that time on that date. Any questions? I'm here as, as well as our city clerk.
Any questions or comments for the city manager or for our city clerk on this particular agenda item?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Wilson here.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Wilson.
Yes, sir, I'm getting ready to exit the city commission meeting, getting ready to go to the high school graduation.
Okay, thank you very much for notifying us, and have a, have a good evening. Thank you. So any other questions or comments on this particular agenda item? Mr. Kramer, the only question I have was on the first, the structures for consideration, that paragraph. I thought, I was looking for 22 properties, but there's only 21 listed. Am I, what am I, what am I missing?
So with the 23 structures as presented, if you'll notice, a couple of them, number 17 and 18, single-family house and detached garage. So those are the two structures on the one address.
Oh, okay.
A couple of those have, single-family house and shed, and single-family house and detached garage, I'll show in number 18 and number 13. So we count those as separate structures.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I didn't, I couldn't figure that out, but that makes sense. Any other questions or comments for, on this particular agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Commissioner Priesinger, I move that we approve Resolution B 2250, setting the public hearing for unsafe and dangerous structures for July 14, 2020, in the city commission chambers.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Leonhard, a second.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Priesinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder.
Aye.
An aye vote, aye is the mayor. The ayes have it, the vote is four to zero in the affirmative, so we've, the motion is carried, so we've approved Resolution B 2250. Thank you. Next is Resolution B 2251, resolution of intent, industrial revenue bonds, Price Chopper.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner, another good news item for the city of Leavenworth. I think the community, over at least the past year, has been anticipating a renovation of our Price Chopper located at 2107 South Fourth Street. Tonight before you is the first official action related to that project. We also have Joel Riggs, I believe, from the company, from the development company, to talk about the project. So I'm going to introduce the item that we're considering tonight, give you a little bit of background, our timeline, our process about what comes next, and then I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Riggs to preview the project a little bit for you. And then he and I, and our city attorney, David Waters, who has worked a lot on this project and this development agreement, for any questions you may have. So city staff and supermarket developers, Inc., have entered into a pre-development agreement. We did that on May 6th for the purpose of facilitating the redevelopment of the current Price Chopper store at 2107 South Fourth Street. Among other items, the agreement outlines financial incentives that will be pursued. Nothing has been approved, nothing's been brought to the commission at this point, that will all happen at a later date, to make the project financially feasible. The majority of the incentive request, which includes tax and increment financing and community improvement district, will come before the commission as the city and the development team work through a project timeline and ultimately a development agreement. However, the pre-development agreement includes a request for industrial revenue bonds, which would allow supermarket developers to use the city and state's local sales tax exemption for labor and building materials. The IRB process, or the industrial revenue bond process, must be in place before the developer can start purchasing materials. That's why the item before you tonight is coming to you before a development agreement and the outlining of the other incentives. I will note that this is a non-binding resolution, meaning that it's a good faith show by the city, the intention to go forward with this, but there is the full understanding that if the IRBs are not issued, the developer within be required to pay the sales tax that they were exempted from by getting the city's sales tax exemption. So that is the city item before you tonight, and I will turn it over to Mr. Joel Riggs for any comments he may have on the project.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Going to a little bit of background about this project. My name's Joel Riggs, with Associated Wholesale Grocers, 5000 Kansas Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas. I am the representative of supermarket developers, which is a wholly-owned subsidiary of Associated Wholesale Grocers. For those of you that don't know us, we are the wholesale grocery distributor for many of the grocery stores in the Kansas City market, in, in addition to about 3,400 stores across the United States. We are about a $10 billion program that delivers groceries to independent grocery retailers, much like the Price Chopper in Leavenworth. And the reason for the, the discussion tonight is, is pretty simple. We are looking to move forward with this project. We've been talking to the city for the better part of a year, and our program is, is part of a redevelopment of the entire Price Chopper, and part of that is going to require buying equipment that is going to require 12 to 14 week lead times for this project to be developed. We are looking at a, at a redevelopment of the existing grocery store, as you know, inside, outside, parking lot, lighting. We're looking at a new facade to the building, a new parking lot to the building, new lighting for the building, LED lighting inside and out, energy efficient cases inside and out, a redevelopment inside the building itself, where patrons will see services that they have not seen in a while, or a much better situation of equipment, much more energy efficient equipment than what we have in that building today. In total, it's about a $12 million investment on the part of the Balls family, and the Balls family are now leaving Leavenworth. They're simply partnering with supermarket developers, or AWG. AWG, again, owns supermarket developers, so we only do grocery store redevelopment for our members. And the Balls organization is a very prominent member of the Associated Wholesale Grocers program within the Kansas City market. They're, they own, I believe, 32 grocery stores in the market as a whole. The goal of this IRB is to provide sales tax exemption for the purchase of the materials, in this particular case, energy efficient cases that would go inside the building. We are well aware that if the, the program and the project does not move forward from the CID and the TIF perspective, that we would still be responsible for the tax. But we are asking the commission to approve this this evening, to allow us to move forward and purchase this equipment. And if it, if it doesn't move forward, we know we're responsible, but if it does, it would allow for a significant sales tax exemption during the, the construction, or for the construction of this project. We thank you very much for considering us, and, and we would happy to answer any questions that you may have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Riggs. Do my fellow, any of my fellow commissioners have questions or comments for Mr. Riggs or Mr. Kramer?
Commissioner Priesinger, I have, I have a few questions for Mr. Riggs. I know that you're only here for the IRBs, or tonight, the only action is for the IRBs, but you've kind of opened up the door for some other questions. When do you think possibly we'll start, and when will you finish the plan?
Very simply, we will start, we will start as soon as the ability to move forward with the TIF and the CID is approved. The, the reason for tonight's meeting is because of the long lead times on the equipment, 12 to 14 weeks. We plan to have construction started, and well into the end of the summer, in the beginning of, of, of the fall, and we would go into 2021, and, and hopefully have that construction completed before the summer of 2021.
So would you be phasing this production, or is it going to be a close down for a period of time?
We will not close the store.
Okay.
The, the store will not be closed. We, we will, we will be phasing it, or working through the construction during, or working with the, the building being open during construction.
Okay. And on the south side of the building currently, I think there's a liquor store, I don't know if, if it's still open or not. Will that remain, or is that going to be part of your pharmacy or an extension of your store?
It will not be an extension of the store. It, it's, my understanding, it will remain, but the, the grocery store itself is the only thing that we're redeveloping as part of this project.
Okay, and will you have any food kiosk in there, you know, Chinese restaurant, or Starbucks? You have, currently have a Starbucks, but will that remain?
The Starbucks will remain, pharmacy will remain. We, we will not be having any additional tenants joining us with this project as, as part of this, as part of this renovation. But we do plan to have different offerings than what we have today. As, I'm sure you're all were, well aware, the COVID-19 has changed a lot of how we operate grocery stores. Specifically, anything that has the access for buffets and, and things where people self-serve, we have to make some changes with all of our grocery stores nationwide, but most specifically, we have to make some changes that make it safer for people to shop in our stores. That's part of what we'll be doing with this project.
Well, I thank you. On behalf of the citizens of Leavenworth, I know that it, the renovation is sorely needed at Price Chopper. When it first opened, what, 32 years ago? I can't remember exactly when. It was really a showcase store, and it's still an outstanding store, but things develop over time, grocery stores develop, and Price Chopper, this Price Chopper's probably fallen a little bit behind in the, in keeping up with competition, but I'm looking, I'm sure with the renovation, the amount of money they're investing, it's going to be an outstanding store, and it'd be great to serve the citizens of Leavenworth. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
No, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Commissioner Leonhard.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner Leonhard, go ahead.
Yeah. Um, I'm guessing then you already have a floor plan established for the remodeling?
We do.
Okay. And are you going to eliminate any departments?
No, we will not be eliminating any departments. We'll be enhancing the departments that we do have, making some changes inside of the deli, making some changes inside of the pharmacy, making, mostly making changes to the perimeter of the store, which was what we call the fresh departments, not the center store, which is your traditional grocery offerings. The goal is to make this look like a new grocery store on the outside. There will be improvements to the exterior facade of the building. It will have some natural elements added to it, some natural wood elements, and some artificial wood elements added to it, signage, LED lighting, parking lot improvements, drainage improvements, landscaping improvements. The, the overall look of the store is going to look like a new store, and that's really the goal of what we're trying to do, is to make it look new inside and out, but we will not be eliminating any of the internal departments that we have currently.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bowder, any, any comments from you?
Um, we've been talking with you guys for a long time, and really excited about getting this going. I, I love Price Chopper, and I'm looking forward to your improvements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the support.
Mr. Riggs, I echo the comments of my fellow commissioners, and I appreciate your detailed rundown this evening. I don't have any further questions. It sounds like you have a very, very good plan, and we, if there are no further questions or comments, I will entertain a motion on this particular agenda item.
Commissioner Priesinger, Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution B 2251, the resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds for Price Chopper. Not to issue them, but the resolution of intent to issue them.
Yes, is there a second?
Commissioner Bow.
Go ahead, Commissioner, go ahead, Commissioner Bowder, I cut you off, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I should have waited for you. Commissioner-
Commissioner Bowder, I second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Prisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder? Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And I vote aye as the mayor. The ayes have it. The vote is four to zero in favor. The motion carries, so we've approved Resolution Number B-2251.
Mr. Mayor, if I could make just a quick comment. This is a huge step tonight. It's the first resolution of intent. The heavy lifting does remain, so I just want, so the public watching, there's still a lot to come. You'll see a development agreement come before the commission. You'll see public hearings on some of the incentive requests. So a very positive step tonight, but there's still a lot to do over the next couple of months, so you'll see this quite a bit, but a positive step tonight for sure.
Well, thank you, Mr. Kramer, and once again, thank you, Mr. Riggs.
Good luck, Mr. Riggs. Mr. Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for your support. We appreciate it greatly.
Thank you. Next agenda item is change order number one, 2019 sewer I and I.
I'll turn this over to our Public Works Director, Mike McDonald.
There you go, Mike. Yes.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is related to the recently completed 2019 sanitary sewer infiltration project. This was a four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar project that was awarded to Line and Weaver Construction in November of two thousand and nineteen. It included a repair of a very deep manhole in the vicinity of 2400 Kingman, and then replacing sewers in the alley between Kiowa and Dakota on Fifth Street to Broadway. It was an interesting journey through Leavenworth history up north. We realized as we were approaching the last section of the sewer line to replace from Sixth Street headed east to Fifth Street, that the replacement sewer line was not following the grade of the existing sewer line. And did some further exploration and excavations, and we realized that at the upper end of the line, just off the street on Fifth Street, is what is known as a flush tank. There's a picture of this kind of included in the policy report. It is a large brick manhole. Well, I guess it's only four foot wide, but the intent of this was to function back in the early days of sewer systems. They put water at the upstream end and periodically opened them. This particular drawing shows one that they would have dropped a hook down into and grabbed it and pulled the mechanism up to let the water out, and would send everything that was in the sewer system down to the Missouri River to go wherever it went. The problem with this type of an installation is you don't, you can't really tell by looking, because when they were taken out of service, probably in the thirties or forties, oftentimes the insides were broken down and they looked like a manhole. And typically in Leavenworth, when you find these, the tank is maybe six or eight feet deep, and the sewer line it connects to is another, perhaps five to often ten feet below that. So our GIS system had not identified this as a flush tank, and the survey by our engineer did not identify it as a flush tank. Fortunately, our staff and the contractor asked enough questions about why we weren't lining upright as we started. And Taylor, if we can go back to the plan and profile sheet with the red line. If we had simply followed the plans, we would have been higher in the alley with the new sewer line. And when you're doing renovation work, that's not a good way to go without going to each and every house to make sure it stays connected to the new sewer line, which in this case was almost five foot higher at Fifth Street than the existing line would be. We were able to recover from that problem. We constructed the new sewer line at the same elevation as the old one, reconnected all the building services and went on. The problem with that is the two manholes that were involved in that line, there's one kind of in the middle of the page. That's a new manhole that we had constructed so that we could have a small enough distance for our clinging equipment to reach from one end to the other. And then the replacement manhole at the far right side of the page, they were deeper than we had budgeted the construction estimate for and the contractor bid on. So there's additional work to do what we would have done in the first place, and we were able to use the unit prices for excavated material and manhole depth to come up with additional prices for that. Additionally, the longtime problems in the 2400 block of Kingman, that manhole was in bad shape and getting worse, but it was already worse than it was when we had taken TV inspection and inventoried it, preparing the plants, and additional excavation was required around it in order to stabilize the roadway and to compact it properly. So at the end of the day, these two locations, we've added fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars worth of work to the project. It is, the project's done, and it's done well. We used the lesson of a flush tank to plan for, look more closely at the next series of lines that we expect to replace in the upcoming years. And we believe that whole section, all the manholes along Fifth Street are in fact flush tanks, and we'll just build these extra costs into the project rather than find out about them as we go along.
Yeah, it's amazing what you can find on these projects on the old infrastructure, I think, right, Mr. McDonald? So.
I'd never heard of a flush tank until I came here thirty years ago, and we're still finding them.
Right. Any comments or questions from my fellow commissioners to Mr. McDonald on this particular agenda item? Mr. McDonald, this is Mayor Griswold. Just, this work's already, basically already been done because it was detected, and we couldn't have proceeded unless this work had been done, correct? I mean, is this project done?
This project is done.
Okay, that's fine. Just wanted to clarify that. If there are no other questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion on this agenda item.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Prisinger, I move that we approve the change order number one to 2019 sanitary sewer I and I as presented.
Commissioner Bowder, second please.
There's a motion and a second on this particular agenda item. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger. Commissioner Prisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
I got it.
Am I coming through?
Yes, you are. Yes, you are. Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
And as the mayor, I vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is four to zero to approve. So the motion carries, so we've approved change order number one with Line and Weaver Construction for the construction of the 2019 sanitary sewer I and I project. Thank you very much. Next is First Consideration Ordinance 2020 hyphen A, General Improvement Bonds.
Our city clerk, Carla Williamson, will handle this item.
Mayor and Commissioner, this item is to, the first consideration for the ordinance to issue the general obligation refunding and improvement bond, Series 2020A, in the amount of eight million, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. This came before the commission at the last meeting as a resolution just of the intent to sell the bonds and the notice to sell them. The amounts for the bond, that eight million plus, break down to the stormwater project for Second and Chestnut in the amount of two million, thirty thousand. Independence Court Stormwater Project, four hundred and sixty-five thousand. Pavement Management 2019 temporary notes to permanent financing, one million, four hundred and fifteen thousand. And then refunding of various previous bonds that have been issued. So that's not new debt, it's just basically refinancing those, refunding those in the amount of four million, two hundred and twenty thousand. The sale of the bonds will be on Tuesday, June ninth, and the results of those will come to the city commission at those proceedings. And then at that time, we'll have all the final numbers for the ordinance, and that will come before the commission for second consideration and final approval on the sale of the bonds.
Okay, that's a good rundown. And tonight, we're just asking for a consensus from the commission, correct?
Correct.
Any questions or comments for Ms. Williamson on this particular agenda item? If not, we're going to go around the horn, and we'll begin, just to say if there's a consensus, thumbs up with Commissioner Leonhard first.
Aye.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Leonhard, Commissioner Prisinger?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowder?
Yes.
And I, as the mayor, say yes. So we have a full consensus. So we'll move forward with this particular agenda item, and it'll be placed on, what, second or for second consideration?
Yeah, on the June ninth meeting.
Okay, on the June ninth meeting. Thank you. That's it, except for you have to go to the consent agenda. That's the next agenda item. And I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Leonhard for the consent agenda.
I move to approve claims for May ninth, two thousand and twenty, through May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of one million, seventy-seven thousand, eight hundred and three dollars and seventy-three cents. Net amount for payroll number eleven, effective May twenty-second, two thousand and twenty, in the amount of three thousand, okay, three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and one cent. Includes police and fire pension in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Bowder, second.
Any discussion? If not, we will begin voting with Commissioner Prisinger.
Aye.
Commissioner Leonhard?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
And I, as the mayor, vote aye. The ayes have it. The vote is four to zero. So we have approved the consent agenda for this evening's city commission meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Leonhard. I think that's it for the agenda items that are part of our agenda. So I'm going to start with Mr. Kramer, our city manager, and see if he has anything additional this evening.
The only thing that I would let everybody know is we heard the same information that everybody else heard this afternoon, that the governor's office had announced that essentially effective at midnight tonight, all the governor's reopen orders would cease, and therefore all decisions regarding any controls or any restrictions would go to the one hundred and five individual counties in the state of Kansas. So that's where the item sits right now. Any questions to the city about any new restrictions, regulations, would need to be answered by Leavenworth County, specifically the Leavenworth County Health Officer. So we're awaiting that information just as you are, to find out if there, what restrictions will be in place. I know there's going to be some guidelines, but as far as any type of orders, that would come from the county. So we await those as well as the information is just developing this afternoon. So that's all I would add.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Commissioner Leonhard?
I do have a question, Commissioner Leonhard, for, well, Kramer, do you have any idea when the county will, I mean, are they going to look into that tonight?
I honestly don't know. I know that they're meeting tomorrow. I don't know if that's been added to their agenda, but they may, if they amend that, I would keep an eye on that. But at this point, I do not know.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, also, one more thing. I came across this article that I wanted to share. It's just an excerpt from the book, The Road to Character, by author David Brooks. And Brooks goes on to write, "Joy emanates unbidden and unforced. Joy comes as a gift when you least expect it. At those fleeting moments, you know why you were put here and what truth you serve. You may not feel giddy at those moments. You might not hear the orchestra's delirious swell or see flashes of crimson and gold, but you will feel a satisfaction, a silence, a peace, a hush. Those moments are the blessings and the signs of a beautiful life." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Leonhard. Commissioner Prisinger?
I have a couple of things. One is, Mr. McDonald still on? Are you still here, Mr. McDonald?
Yes, I am.
Maybe you said it and I didn't hear it. On the pavement management program, how many miles did that include? Do you have any idea?
Actually, I do. The centerline miles on the collector and archerial streets is two point five. The residential streets is three point seven. And if we do all of the alternates, it would be an additional two point one miles.
Okay, thank you very much. I just, I don't know if you'd mentioned that before. I had, I didn't catch it.
That's a good question.
It's also worth noting, some of these streets are very, very wide, like Broadway, for instance. You could probably get four lanes of traffic on that if you wanted to, but we use it for two, so it counts as the centerline miles for two lanes.
And let's keep it two lanes, too. Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Next item I have, I've had a couple citizens contact me about grass cutting. I know that all of our contractors that cut grass for the city, they're instructed not to blow the grass into the street, or if they do, then they blow it back into the yard or the area they cut. And they've done a very good job of that. But there are probably many citizens that do cut the grass and then blow it to the street. And I don't recommend an ordinance or any police action to enforce it, but I, almost a public information campaign to be undertaken to educate people not to do that for a couple reasons. One, it does cause a safety issue somewhat for bicycle riders and motorcycle riders. If they're going at such a speed and they come around a corner and there it is, it could be a slippage issue. It does cause problems in our stormwater and grass clippings in there, is more that we have to process. And three, it's just unsightly. It's just sloppy. So when you're mowing your grass and it's kicking out on the right side of your mower, mow in a direction so it kicks into the grass, not into the street. I just ask that of the people that do that. Next thing is, I saw that the city did announce that the Thornton Extension is going to start from, what is it, about Broadway, west to Tenth Avenue, or is it Maple West?
Maple.
Maple. So does that mean from Maple East through Fifth Street, is that going to be opened up?
It's open now. I drove it on the way back to the commission meeting tonight. Yeah, it is open right now.
Okay. So I haven't driven the, I've driven it down to Fourth Avenue from Maple to Fourth Avenue, but I haven't driven it down at Second Avenue intersection and up to Fifth Street, but I'm looking forward to event. No, I've watched it many times, and it looks good. Can I go north and south on Second Avenue through that intersection at Second Avenue and Thornton now?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes, you can.
And we're still on schedule possibly for September finish all the way to Tenth Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Prisinger. Good rundown. Commissioner Bowder?
Yeah, thank you. Mike, I went by there today. It looks really good, Thornton does. No, I don't have, I don't have anything else to add. I hope, you know, the people, the general public who looks at this sees, you know, it is kind of difficult doing these meetings like this, but there is some good things about it as well. And anyway, I have really taken to using these meetings or Zoom meetings a lot more. And, but I'm looking forward to when we can all be in the same room again, but I know that's going to be a while, so.
So anyway, thanks everyone for your pay regard to this.
Thank you, Commissioner Bowder. And that, I'm not going to get into too much detail, but I think that's one thing and we're not, I don't want to get into a big discussion tonight, but as we go forward, I, I think that, you know, if we can continue, we'll definitely continue with the Zoom meetings if that's what all or some of the commissioners feel most comfortable with. If one or two want to come in here, we'll socially distance ourselves and if one or two of us have to be down at the, you know, the lower tables, we'll do that. But just be thinking about it and, and provide your, you know, your input directly back to the city manager, Mr. Kramer, because I think we are coming up to a point where we could, where we need to think about that. But I, I'm all for maximum flexibility in terms of, well, we can, we've, we can accomplish our mission. We have accomplished our mission over the last two months or so with this, with these Zoom meetings, working at remotely, but we can adjust that a bit if we need to on a commissioner by commissioner basis. So that's, if anybody has any comments, that's kind of what I'm thinking right now. And then the only other thing is yesterday I had the privilege and the honor of representing the city at the Leavenworth National Cemetery at their annual Memorial Day ceremony, which was certainly scaled back from all the previous ceremonies that have been held out there. But I was invited by the Leavenworth County Memorial Day Committee to give some remarks and was able to do that. And there were not a lot of people in attendance, but the people there, I think appreciated what the committee did. It was a kind of a reduced agenda, but we accomplished what we needed to do, which is the recognition of our fallen American, fallen veterans in all our wars. Think we did a good job on that. And I was able to present a wreath on behalf of the city and it was one of only two wreaths because of the scaled back version, the other one, of course, being provided by the, by the Leavenworth County Memorial Day Committee. But I was proud to represent the city. The ceremony went well and fortunately the rain ended about an hour, an hour and a half before the ceremony, so it wasn't a problem. But I don't have anything else, so I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved, Commissioner Prisinger.
Second? Is there a second?
Second, Commissioner Bowder.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to adjourn this evening's meeting. We are going to begin voting with Commissioner Leonhard.
Aye.
Commissioner Prisinger?
Aye.
Commissioner Bowder?
Aye.
And I as the mayor vote aye. So we've, motion passes four to zero, the ayes have it, so we are adjourned. Thank you.